You are recording.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee to order, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I do have a flag. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
Which stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
Liberty.
Justice.
Justice.
For all. All right, thank you. All right, so first order of business, I just want to announce that this meeting is being livestreamed via the Zoom platform, and it's also being recorded, therefore the public can watch this live as we deliberate and discuss tonight, and they can also tune into the district YouTube channel and watch this after the fact. For the record, I want to announce who is on this call for the school committee. We have Mr. Marx, we have Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Niemchurro, Mrs. French, Mr. Mason, and myself, Mrs. Hughes. Mrs. Mason is not in attendance this evening. For the district, we have Dr. Kazimant, we have our Assistant Superintendent Kate Kalis, our Business Manager Anne Marie Geister. We also have Vice Principal of the High School Janet Brown, who is here to present some information during her appearances section, and Susan Varney, our Administrative Assistant Extrudinaire. So without further ado, we'll jump into our business, and we have some minutes to approve. The minutes were pushed out, so hopefully everybody's had a chance to look at them. We need to approve the meeting minutes of December 15th, 2021, so I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of December 15th, 2021, as written.
So move.
I have a motion from Mr. Mason, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second from Mrs. Niemchurro. I'm gonna get that right one of these times. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, we'll do roll call. Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Niemchurro?
Yes.
Mrs. French?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so that was unanimous. Next up, we have the approval of meeting minutes from our January 4th, 2022 meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of January 4th, 2022, as written. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion from Mr. Mason, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second from, I think that was Jen, Mrs. Smith, is that, yes, okay? Any questions or comments on the meeting, on those meeting minutes as presented? Seeing none, we'll do roll call. Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Niemchurro?
Yes.
Mrs. French?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so those were approved unanimously. Next up, we have bills and payroll. Attached to our agenda is a listing of the warrants that were presented, and I believe, Mrs. Smith, that you've, you've taken over the role of looking at them and signing off on them. So this is really just a recommendation to accept the bills and payroll warrants as presented. I would entertain that motion.
So moved.
I have a motion from Mrs. Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second from Mr. Mason, any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll do roll call, Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Niemchurro?
Yes.
Mrs. French?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so that was unanimous as well. Next up, we're gonna go into our appearances. Our student representatives unfortunately tonight couldn't be with us, so we're working on figuring out a better method for them to share information and get some representation. So hopefully for the next meeting, someone will be able to show up there. Unfortunately, between scheduling and work and everything else is the tough time of year. So stay tuned, our reps will be back, hopefully the next meeting we have. Next up, we have the holiday gift drive, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Kazimant, and he can give the nice introduction while I get my dog to stop barking.
Thank you, I'm Adam Chair. So although it seems like months and months ago that we were preparing for the winter break, it was only, well, it was little, little, little under a month ago, and we had a lot going on in terms of, you know, assisting the community in a couple different ways. And so we stayed with two staples that events that we've done the past one, and we'll talk about the first one last, but we, we had our senior luncheon, which was a great success, but more importantly though, for the second year in a row, I believe, I wanna make sure there was never, it was the second year in a row. I couldn't remember if it was two or three. We petitioned the community at large, the school committee, the schools, the committee, to donate what they could to help our students in the district with with a variety of different things, but mostly gifts for the Christmas season. So with that, we had a great amount of help, our central office, the high school, middle school, but quite frankly, you know, we want to have Ms. Brown kind of explain it, because she really spearheaded the whole thing, and I think it'd be best if she, you know, went over kind of the how-tos and what were the final results.
Yes, event. Good evening, so I am here tonight to ensure that the modesty of my central office colleagues does not inhibit you from understanding the Herculean effort that they exhibited this year in ensuring that all Narragansett students and their family had a wonderful holiday season. In short, headed up by Susan Varney and Anne Marie Geister, throughout the month of December, the central office staff worked overtime, around time, and through the night, so that the wishes of 86 children, ranging from the ages of five months to 17 years, representing 36 district families were fulfilled. Susan and Anne Marie coordinated the generous donations from our community members to support our students, notably the Phillipston Congregational Church, the Food Pantry, the Templeton Police Department, Haywood Hospitals, as each of these organizations bought presents for our students and their families. Additionally, they organized 23 members of our NRFB community who gave generously to ensure that our students' gift wishes came true. Our in-house elves this year included teachers, members of telehealth yourselves, retired employees, substitute teachers, the custodial staff, central office employees, and parents. In addition to these members, supporting students, community members from Templeton and Phillipston donated $1,865 to our Warrior Wishes Fund. $1,326 of those dollars went directly to buying presents. Chelsea Mason, Crystal Hanks, and Kalen Carpenter spent hours pushing around shopping carts to ensure that wish list items were fulfilled. And because of the generosity of the Warrior community, the remaining $539 will be donated to the Food Pantry to ensure that our residents, the residents of our community in need are fed throughout the winter. Over the course of two days, Susan and Anne Marie oversaw the pickup of 86 present-filled trash bags, strewning them across Kate Kalis's office, thank you Kate, and when a certain superintendent, who shall remain nameless, canceled school the day before vacation with four families' bags still to be left to be picked up, he drove the presents to each of those houses so that the families were able to have them for the holidays. Books and gift cards, winter blankets, socks and boots, baking kits, and Barbies, Hot Wheels, and board games, colored markers, paint, and easels, along with plaid pajama bottoms and an assortment of Spider-Man and Avenger toys, were all bought so that every family in our community had presents. And while this was the biggest of all of our holiday drives, it was not alone. The high school council and field hockey team collected food pantry donations, as did the middle school student council. The middle school Leos Club collected toys. A high school student in the Warrior Leadership Class put together a winter coat drive, and Jason Donovan students raised $600 for the food pantry by baking and selling almond bread. So I am here to celebrate the work of my colleagues and our students because, along with being generous, they're also humble, and so I am honored to have shared with you just the depths of their generosity of both financial and also their time.
Wow, thank, thank you for that update, there is so much good in this district. Speechless, so thank you. Anyone from the committee wanna say anything? Speechless, I think, I think sums it up, and thank you. It, there were so many people that were instrumental to all of those events, and it truly embodies the spirit of the school, so we're so thankful and blessed to have all of you, our staff, our students, you know, the administration, it's wonderful, great news to share, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and it is not an understatement to say that the holiday gift drive would not have happened this year without Susan and Anne Marie. I cannot express the hours to you that they put into ensuring that the gift drive happened this year.
Thank you to Anne Marie and Susan then as well for getting that coordination effort, it's, we have so many unsung heroes, so it's so nice when we get to praise the hard work of those that do help out so much, so thank you.
There's also a message in the chat from Terry Griffiths, Margaret, I don't know if you wanna read that or have me read it.
Let me, let me go ahead and do that, because Terry Griffiths is also here via chat, she's on the Templeton Select Board and acts as their liaison to the school district, so she attends our meetings, and she said, "In keeping with the holiday gift drive, I'd like to thank and acknowledge the school's participation in the tree lighting ceremonies in three villages, their appearance and the appearance at the senior center, the marching band, cheerleaders, chorus, color guard, Ann Lyons, Cameron Rodriguez, Megan Hazelton, and she says, 'Please forgive me if I forgot anyone or any group,' and oh yes, the parents of course." So thank you, Terry, for, for sending out that shout out to that, to all who participated. I know that we, you were very gung ho in trying to get that event built up and have us help participate with you, so it's great to acknowledge those folks as well, so thank you for bringing that up. Okay, well, thank you, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted just to simply say that the, the next event, you know, a lot was going on, and I'll tell you that I'm laughing because watching, watching two people handle at times this entire, this entire effort, we had trash bags filled with, and there was a very unique numbering system, etc., and and there had to be, well, there was 83, 84 bags, I don't know, there was just a lot of them, and every day I'd go in, the bags would multiply somehow, right, there'd be more and more and more, so honestly, it was just a great effort, and I think that it's the part of, of being an educator or teacher working with kids that people like to do, and when you hire those type of people, it, you do, you do kind of take it for granted because they do so many good things, but it was a lot of good happening in those couple weeks. Another great thing was, was our senior luncheon, and we were, we were gonna have that senior luncheon one way or another. Friday was a, was a snow day, the weather was not, was not great, and we kind of worried how many folks to be able to make it out, and it certainly had to be a pared down version, normally we would have the chorus and you know, over the years, we've had a lot of neat, neat things, but because either of COVID or because of the snow, we just weren't, we had to pare it down. But we had close to Anne Marie, how many meals did we serve ultimately, was it 60?
I think it was, yeah, probably 50 to 60 that we served.
We served 60 meals, and with a skeleton crew, and again, you know, the central office and our administrative staff, you know, waited at tables, and it's, it's just a great event, and it's honestly one of my favorites, they, folks came out and wanna thank our food service director, the food service folks who also helped, of course, they prepared the meals, and it was a great couple days, it was a very busy couple days, but it was certainly well worth it, and something that, you know, we wanted, I think it solidified, you know, to be a tradition, you know, moving forward. And I know that people were very appreciative, we received a bunch of calls, emails, etc., just, you know, just thanking folks who put this together, so it was a great time, it really was, it was a great way to go off into the winter break, and for the holidays, and you know, my appreciation goes out to everyone, because it certainly wasn't, it wasn't forgotten, you know, and folks really did appreciate generosity and hard work.
Great, thank you, it's nice to see so many events happen again. So I think that is also one of the, the real positives about all of these things. We've had to scale so much, we have to, we had to scale back so much, you know, with being in school, remote hybrid, this, not wanting to, to have events, so it's so nice that we were able to actually execute on a lot of these things, so it's good to see that we're getting back into having events and getting that sense of community that this district and the two towns have always been known for, so thanks again, everyone. Next up, we have public input. Has anything come in, Susan, I'll let you check one last time.
I've not seen anything, but let me give it one more check, let you know.
Bye Janet, thank you so much for coming in.
Nope, there is nothing at this point.
So we'll pass over, and if the public does have any questions or comments, obviously they can reach out to central office and follow up with anything that they would like to ask or whatever, and do that or wait for our next meeting. NDEA, I don't see an NDEA reps, so we'll skip over that for now. And next up is the budget update, we have been talking about our FY22 budget and the need to recertify, and I know Ms. Geister has presented and talked about this. She mentioned that the last meeting, our E and D was finally certified, so I'm going to turn this over to Anne Marie and to Dr. Kazimant, of course, to talk us through the, there was really two options that we can look at of how we could recertify our budget so that we, at the end of the day, are not upside down. So we'll turn it over to Ms. Geister if you wanna go through those with, to the committee, and then we can decide if the, the will of the committee is to take a vote and recertify this evening, we will do so.
Sure. There was two options presented, option one and option two. Option one actually eliminates the 189,832 that we had planned for ESER to cover, the minimum local contributions, and that is option one. That would actually lower our bottom line, giving us a $19,867,354 for our bottom line budget. Both options do not change the assessments to Phillipston or Templeton that were voted at their Springtown meetings. So basically, the recap, option one lowers the bottom line for our overall budget, so what would happen is those expenses from the general fund would have to be pushed to the ESER grant to be used for the $189,000. Option two actually keeps our bottom line the same as it was originally certified at, which is $20,57,186. And in order to make up the shortfall from that ESER money, it would require a vote of school committee to use $189,832 of our recently certified E and D. That option there would still give us a balance for July 1's use of $550,996 of E and D, which is what we typically try to shoot for, about $500,000 to put towards the following year's budget. So that is option two. I don't know if anyone has any questions?
I don't have any questions, I just, can you just explain what'll happen to the ESER monies if option one is selected? And kind of the thought process around, you know, what, what is your recommendation, and, and I, it's a leading question, because I know that the ESER funds really come into play, so maybe explain that, so everyone kind of understands some of the subtle differences in each of these options as well.
So ESER 2 was, our ESER 2 is $551,000 and some change. Of that money, back last spring, it was said that a portion of that money could help cover each town's additional minimum local contribution increase. The towns had to vote to use that money, both towns did vote to accept our help with our ESER funds. During the summer, however, the governor in Desi decided that's not how the ESER 2 money would work, and basically pulled that option off the table from us and said, "You cannot use that grant money to cover their local contributions, so you need to go back, you could go back to the towns, ask them to have more town meetings, see if they'll approve a higher number to cover that deficit. You could lower your bottom line by that money, or when your E and D gets certified, you can opt to use that." So if we go with the option of lowering the bottom line by the $189,000, what would happen is that $189,000, that is, not being used for minimum local contribution in the grant, would have to pick up expenses from the general fund, it would just shift from the general fund over to the grant. The second option, if we use the $189,000 from our certified E and D, that would leave the $189,000 in the ESER grant, which could be rolled forward to FY23 to help offset where we were going to use that E and D. So both sort of get you to the same place by FY23. I think my recommendation would be to use E and D and leave the bottom line with the higher number. Using the E and D is a lot cleaner than trying to move expenses out of the general fund, finding the exact ones that are gonna meet the $189,000. I think it's just cleaner to let the $189,000 roll to FY23 to be used there.
Yep.
And.
Say, does anyone have any questions, but go ahead, Dr. Kazimant first, sorry.
I just wanted to make sure that, you know, and I spoke, Anne Marie and I were invited to the Phillipston Select Board last week, and the original plan has, and we had this plan honestly last budget season for this upcoming budget season, because I was asked point blank in more of the meetings, what, what was the plan because of this, this idea of this fiscal cliff? And the idea, now again, at that time, we were still all under the impression that the, that the monies could be used to offset the, the minimum local contribution, so we were all under that, you know, you know, that mindset. What actually happened is, because what we, what we knew is that we'd have a lot of E and D. Anne Marie, I think you're.
No, she's all set.
So what we wanted to do was to have as much E and D as possible, and we knew that we were gonna have a higher than normal amount, and we were trying to roll every dime that we could in the, in the, in the event that we would come up short, like we did last fiscal year, we had, remember, we used not this $189,000, we had to use ESER monies just to balance, right, we used, it just, a coincidence, it was $189,000 from one of the ESERS just to balance. So our goal was to push as much money into FY23 as possible. Either way, no matter how you look at this, and yeah, it does kind of, you know, some folks were like, "Well, the money's still there," but not all of it will be there. And that is what ultimately will be our biggest issue, we, we couldn't push forward as much money to FY23 as we had hoped, no matter what happens, it doesn't matter at this point, once the state had said, "No, you can't use it," one of the two things we're gonna have to, you know, happen, so any event, that's how it started, this is where we're at. And, and I agree with Anne Marie's, you know, assessment on the, on the issue in terms of how, you know, we should move forward with our current, our current issue.
Anyone on the committee have any questions, I know we've gone over this several times, but does anyone have any questions before we move forward to see if the committee's ready to make a motion to take a vote on this? Okay, seeing none. The first thing I just want to talk about is the rule of necessity. It doesn't really apply, in the past, we've had a couple of retired teachers on our school committee, so we always put it out there that we may need to invoke the rule of necessity. I'm keeping this on here just because if there was ever a conflict of interest that we could invoke with the rule of necessity, because we need to have enough members to vote, because you need six positive votes to certify a budget. So I'm gonna, that's enough on the rule of necessity, I can go over it in more detail if we ever need it, but I just wanted to mention that is out there if we ever had a conflict like we used to. So let's move on to the FY22 budget recertification, and I'm going to, what I'll do is I'm going to, I'm gonna entertain a motion as recommended, and if we get a motion in a second, then we can vote on that and determine if the school committee wants to move forward with the recommendation of both our superintendent and our business manager. So with that said, and again, this motion is actually one that we have made in the past, so we're not changing the numbers, but we are recertifying them. So I would entertain a motion that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote and recertify the amount of $20,57,186 for the FY22 budget. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion from Mr. Mason, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second from Mrs. French. Any questions, comments on that motion? Seeing none, then we, I will do a roll call vote on the motion, and I'm just gonna double check with Ms. Geister, she can give me a head nod that I've said the number correctly. Excellent, don't wanna screw that up. And we'll do a roll call vote, Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Niemchurro?
Yes.
Mrs. French?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so that was unanimous, and we have necessary six, minimum six votes to pass that. The next vote is to certify, or we're going to, yeah, we actually certify this because we're changing the makeup of the funds for our FY22 estimated receipts, so Mrs. Geister, if you could just follow along and make sure I've said the right numbers, because I have screwed them up in the past, I would entertain a motion that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote that the estimated receipts of $11,264,045 for FY22, which is based on $9,988,464 of Chapter 70 funds, as calculated from the governor's budget of January 27th, 2021, $35,532 of charter school reimbursements from the cherry sheet estimates of January 27th, 2021, $325,217 of Chapter 71 special/regional transportation from the cherry sheet estimates of January 27th, 2021, $480,000 of FY21 certified excess and deficiency funds, $189,832 of FY22 certified excess and deficiency funds, and $245,000 of Medicaid receipts. Do I have that motion?
So move.
I have a motion, I'll give it to Mr. Mason, and do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second from Mrs. Smith. Any questions, comments on those numbers? Seeing none, once again, we'll do a roll call, Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Niemchurro?
Yes.
Mrs. French?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so that was unanimous. Next up, we need to recertify the assessment for the town of Templeton, and this has not changed, so we're just going to recertify the amount. We'll motion that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote that the assessment to Templeton in the amount of $7,143,837 for fiscal year 22. Do I have a motion?
Oh.
I have a motion, I think it was Mr. Marx first, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second from Mrs. Niemchurro. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll do roll call, Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Niemchurro?
Yes.
Mrs. French?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. And lastly, we have the FY22 assessment vote for the town of Phillipston. Again, this number has not changed, it is simply recertified. Again, this number has not changed. It is simply recertifying the amount. I would entertain a motion that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee. Vote the assessment to Phillipston in the amount of one million six hundred forty nine thousand three hundred four dollars for fiscal year twenty two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mrs. French. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second for Mr. Marx. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none, we'll do roll call. Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Neemture?
Yes.
Mrs. French?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
Mr. Marx? And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So that was, uh, unanimous. So we have successfully recertified our FY twenty two budget. Um, using the E and D that was certified for FY twenty two in place of. The, uh, SR two funds that were going to offset MLC increases by our towns. So I did just want to make one note, uh, just because we keep saying it, that our towns assessments. Were reduced by the amount of the increase in MLC. So next year, they're going to have to make up that MLC increase plus. FY twenty three's MLC increase. So I know we've had those discussions with the towns and they're aware of it, but I do just want to keep saying it. So that it doesn't get forgotten, that they will see a bit, a bigger bump than normal because, um, because of that change and, uh. Again, shame on the governor and the state for putting us in this position because it was not, not very nice. Okay, so that's good. We're done with that. Um, FY twenty three budget update, um, I'm just going to do a, a quick, I know the finance committee, we met. Um, there really hasn't been a lot of movement, but I'm going to throw it out to Dr. Kazan and Ms. Geister. If you want to give a quick update as to, um, you know, the fact that you probably still don't have much data to go on yet.
We don't have the state, obviously, um, and, uh, we are. We're anxiously awaiting that number, although we're not hopeful, um, that it'll be any better than it has been, say, for the last. Now, ten years. But we, um, we need that number, although I think, and I won't, I don't want to speak for Anne Marie, but I think we're in good shape, meaning. We have completed our end of it, uh, for the district. We're, we're still waiting on the state number as I just said, but I, I think we're in pretty good shape in terms of. Um, you know, calculating our, you know, our side of things in terms of, uh, cost. And, um, salaries, et cetera. How would you weigh in on that, Anne Marie?
Yeah, I, I actually just this week got two of. The insurance numbers that we've been waiting on, the ones for the retirees. So those are actual numbers, um. One of them was a little bit higher than anticipated, one was a little bit lower, so they're probably a wash compared to what I had estimated. But at least they're exact, so we know what we're working with. I've calculated the Esser funds that I anticipate to roll over into FY twenty three. I mean, nothing is for sure until we finish out the school year, but it looks like it'll be approximately. Um, eight hundred thousand between the leftover hundred and eighty nine out of S or two, and then the remaining S or three. Which was intended to go into FY, um, twenty three. So. Um, we're in pretty good shape that way. It's just waiting on the numbers to see how far they are off from our expenses.
Great, thank you. With, with that being said, I was going to actually wait till the end of the meeting, but this might be a good place to, to have the discussion. We had initially planned on doing, um, a joint board meeting on the twenty fourth. Uh, it, it seems to me that with the governor who was initially supposed to release his numbers yesterday. And that changed, um, that we're probably behind the eight ball and maybe not be prepared as well as we should be. Uh, to meet with both boards to really talk through everything. And I wanted to put that out there and get, um, you know, the feelings from, you know. Dr. Kazivan, who's kind of on point to pull things together with, um, Ms. Geister's assistants, and then also from the committee. Do we want to push off that meeting for at least a couple of weeks? Till we get a better handle on things and we're more prepared?
Yes, I would like that.
Absolutely. I mean, we, we've always scheduled. Goes an election year or not. Uh, because the date changes, obviously, if it's a, if it's a, an election year or a new year, but a new governor. Pardon me. Um, we always usually have that number before we meet or generally try to very hard. Given that we don't have that number, I, I don't, I would rather go to both towns and say, but this is how we're, you know, this is how we're positioned. Um, moving forward FY twenty three, be, you know, with that number. So I, I would like to. I would definitely like to push it off a, a couple of weeks to at least after, uh, the governor presents his budget. Um, so we know how we set.
Anyone from the committee have any concerns or comments, um, about moving it out?
Do we have an idea of when, uh, the governor is going to present? His budget?
I heard Wednesday, right? It was Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday.
It, it's supposed to be next week. Uh, I know, I thought it was Wednesday, I thought it was Tuesday. And then I heard it was Wednesday, um. Uh, the regional association who keeps us, you know, pretty up to date, Julie. Um, I, I haven't seen a definitive at this point in time, so I, I, it'll be next week, you know, given, uh. What we understand, I just, I just don't know what day.
Anybody else? Alright, so here, no great.
I just want, I mean, as well as them, I mean, I, I don't disagree with pushing it off as well. And before we do meet with the, um, the tribe boards, I think it's a good idea for all of us to review the numbers. I'm getting any questions that we may have. So I think pushing it off is a good idea. Um, so yes, I am a tipper of that, okay?
Great. Yeah, and I think that, you know, when we meet for our next meeting in the beginning of February. I forget what the date is. I'm going to see if I can pull it up, pull it in front of me real quick. Um, our next regular meeting will be February ninth. Um, I think that will have been enough time because that'll be a finance focused meeting. For us to, to really dive into the numbers because everything should be settled and we should be getting ready to. To go to have, start having our hearings. So I, I would, I would agree with that, Jeff. I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so with that being said, um, we're going to, um, cancel slash postpone, however you want to look at it. The tribe board meeting. So Ms. Varney, if I could ask you maybe to, to reach out on behalf of the committee and Dr. Kazivan at all. Um, that, uh, we are going to do that because we want better numbers and better information. Um, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Also, Madam Chair, would hopefully gives us an opportunity, depending, is that we can meet in person. Um, I, I think it, 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 we'll have to make a decision if, if we have to do it virtually. That's a lot of, that's a lot of people on a, um, on a Zoom meeting. So then we'd have to probably have to discuss whether we want to chop it up, just Templeton, Phillipston. So I, you know, I think maybe it gives us, you know, maybe some time to see how these numbers. Um, go down as we, as we hear that they are, and hopefully we can get back to meeting in person as we do. But again, no, I'm not holding out for that, but it'll give us maybe some time to do that.
Chris, can I also suggest at, at that one, I mean, at least at this time? Can we, at least if we can have the option to meet in person, and if people are not comfortable with it, we can also have panelists on Zoom. Um, you know, I, I, an important meeting like this, I think it's much better to have it in person. But I understand not everybody might want to do that, so I'd like to at least have that option, um, if we could do that.
It's honestly at your discretion as the board. Um, I certainly will communicate that as we get closer. I think most, I, I, I don't want to speak for anyone. I, I, I've heard both sides of it. I've heard people say I'd rather, you know, I'd like to be remote right now because the numbers are climbing. But I've also heard folks say, th- these are the meetings I like to be in person because, um. You know, because it's important information, but I certainly can, uh, as we get closer, we can make that decision, but that'd be really at your, um. You know, it's your pleasure.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Alright, anything else? Okay, so we will postpone that meeting and, uh, and get something scheduled. We'll figure out the best format. Um, once we pick a new date and, and move forward with that. So thank you. Um, next up, we have the business managers report. Um, Anne Marie, I know you had attached, um, your normal reports to this. Is there anything that you'd like to highlight for us with regards to your FY twenty two reports?
Um, I just want to reiterate that we are in a budget freeze. I'm monitoring the bottom line really closely. It's our goal to end the year with a certain dollar amount so that it feeds into E and D to help with the following. Fiscal years, um, budget. So we are monitoring things very closely. There's a. The, the price of supplies, as you all know, has like gone through the roof and it, it really is hurting us. But we're keeping an eye on things the best that we can.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Anne Marie based upon the information in the reports? Okay, thank you. And, um, since I looked at the reports, I did, nothing stood out. And thank you for keeping a close eye on the expenses. Um, it, it's not surprising to hear that things are tight this year. Um, between the fact that, you know, we're, we're clamoring to, to find substitutes. And, um, you know, everything that's happened, uh, with, with supply chains and, and whatnot. Um, so thank you for keeping a mo- monitoring that closely and keeping us informed. Okay, uh, next up, we have superintendent goal setting for FY twenty two to twenty four. Uh, Dr. Kazvid has attached, uh, to the agenda. The proposed goals and the indicators that go along with the goals. I hope everyone had a chance to take a look at those. Um, I, let's do this, let's do a motion to accept them first and hopefully get a second. And then we can ask him and pepper him with all sorts of questions and decide if we're, uh, ready to vote on those because I'd really like to get them in place. Just for the benefit of the new committee members, and I probably have gone over this before, but just in case I haven't. The process for the superintendent, uh, evaluation is we approve the goals. And mid-year, so it's not going to quite be a full year because we're a little late getting these finalized. But in probably the July timeframe, we're going to do a review of the goals and where things are. So we can provide feedback to Dr. Kazivan. It's not as formal as the previous superintendent evaluation. It's more of a two-way dialogue so that we can assess if the goals are still the right goals. Um, what type of evidence that gets presented? Is it the right evidence? Um, is there something else we're looking for? So it's a nice midway point to be able to reset if in fact that we need to tweak things. And, uh, in my mind too, with all of the, um. Potential changes and struggles we're going to have financially, we may need to make adjustments based upon resources because our job. If we approve these goals is to give the resources necessary to achieve the goals. So if we can't give the resources because maybe we have budget constraints, et cetera. Um, then we have to be willing to adjust the expectation on what the goal is. So that's the process. Um, do, you know what? Let me, let me see if there's any questions upfront and then we'll go ahead for a motion. Let's, I think that's a, a nice lead into things. Does anyone have any specific questions for Dr. Kazvid based on what he's presented? Okay, I don't think so. So that's good. Um, I would entertain a motion then to accept the, uh, and approve. The, where is my motion? I'm sorry, I usually have them written out and I don't have this one. To accept the superintendent goals for FY twenty two to FY twenty four as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, any questions or comments? So hearing none, um, I will do a roll call vote. Uh, Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
And Mrs. Neemture?
Yes.
Mrs. French?
Hi.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So we have now accepted the goals, um, for. Dr. Kazivan, and these are the goals that he'll work towards and we'll have more discussions. I think we had spoken a couple of meetings ago, it was probably a couple of months ago now. Um, the academic and administrative subcommittee will also have this on their agenda. So that we can have discussions on these goals as we move forward as well to offer some real time feedback. Um, or be there if Dr. Kazin has any questions, um, or is facing any challenges with trying to get things. Um, together to, to manage to, uh, achieve any of the goals. So we will do that as well. So thank you and thank you for the hard work putting those together. I know that you put them together and the school committee, we gave you feedback. And then we kind of said, okay, so now we give you feedback, go to it. Um, so it was, it was very well laid out and thoughtful and I went through them. I'm like, if this really makes sense. Um, and appreciate you putting the, the thought and effort into kind of consolidating a lot of our feedback together. To make sense of, of the goals and, and the objectives and the indicators, um, for the next two years.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I have to say that, um, Kate, uh, police did a heck of a lot of work as well on these. And helped me craft a lot of the, you know, a lot of the marrying. So a lot of credit goes out to her as well, but thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Alright, um, next up is just an update on the logo, um, and I know that. This is probably long which I'm going to be a bigger discussion. And one of the things that I just wanted to share with the group, I had a discussion with, with, um, Dr. Kazban. Um, about how to present some of this information. And I thought that the content would probably garner a lot of, of discussion from the group. And it would take a longer time period. And my thought was because I think there's still some pieces in play. And I think Mr. Marx, you're working on contacting maybe a group that might offer some assistance and that's still in the works. We've got some, some mockups, um, but everything kind of needs to come together. And what I thought we might do. Is give the group a little more time to put everything in place to present to us as a committee. And once the budget is done on our side where we certify, uh, which is that usually. By the end of March, we're making that happen. We can then turn and focus on this, um, and really that first meeting of the month. Of probably April, we can really sit down with all of the, the information. And focus one meeting on this logo slash mascot slash legislation. And where we need to go so we can really have some hearty discussion at that point. I didn't, I, I was weary of trying to do that. In a meeting alone because, uh, without it being alone because it would take so much time. And I don't want to lose focus on a lot of the other business that we have to discuss. Does, does anybody have any? Um, comments to that? Does that sound like a good idea with other thoughts, how we could proceed? I'll take silence as that sounds like it's a good idea. Um, so I think that'll be our plan and Dr. Kazman has said you and I had kind of had this discussion that, that seemed like it would work. Um, and, and Jeff, you know, that'll give your group too, to put a little more. Um, you know, framework around certain things that you might want to present and then we'll go from there. So that's where we'll head with this. And it also give us a. A, uh, an ability to keep up with what's going on in a legislator, legislature. I just heard today. That they kicked the date for the discussion on the state mascot on the flat and the flag, a seal and the flag. Um, it was supposed to have a decision by I think July thirty first. Now it's December thirty first. So they keep kicking their dates down. So, um, it may be interesting to give it a little more time to hear what's going on at the state level too. So. Alright, with that being said, we're at school committee comments. Any comments from the school committee? I know Heather, you got something to, to add. I want to hear about the great things that the school at Templeton Elementary School for the PTO. Oop, you're on mute.
Oh, sure. Put me on the spot.
I will.
Um, well, we are working on, I, I, I want to give you a teaser, but I don't want to give any details yet. Um, we're working, um, very hard to bring an enrichment activity into the school. Um, as you can imagine, it's hard to, when your audience size can't be very big, it's hard to find things that are. Um, honestly affordable, um, and worthwhile for the kids. So we're working with a. Um, music group out of Worcester that has a, um, cultural experience. Um, immersive, um, music, um, workshops, a series that they do. And we're working hard with them just to honestly about this point, I'm finalizing the dates so that I can put out the, um. Information and put out a flyer so that, you know, parents know what's coming. Um, we're looking at the, um, towards the end of March and I'm looking at, I just need to book. Um, a third day from the group. So I'm working with the group to just, um, have a third. Um, originally we thought we could do it in two days. We actually need a third day, third day just to make our, um, workshop smaller. Um, and we're working very hard with, uh, Wendy McCann has worked hard to get, um, she's our music teacher. To help us get some grants that, um, the local cultural council for both, um, Templeton and Phillips. And are also having a hand at, um, helping reimburse some of the funding for this. So, um, that's as much of a teaser as I want to give.
That's great. Thank you. And, and please. That's great. Thank you. And and please, you know, send our thanks to not only yourself, but the rest of the group that worked so hard On the activities around the holidays. I know you said that you sold out of the
We did have our polar shop like kind of like Dr. Cassavan said about the holiday drive. It almost feels like that was years ago. We were thanks to that was a An event that was the polar shop that was supposed to happen over two days. And the Friday night was supposed to be the first one. And then that next day, Saturday was predicted ice. So we had to scramble last minute to say, okay. We can't do Saturday. We'll see if we can reschedule for Monday for the second day. Well, lo and behold, everybody came Friday. We served Double the people we thought we were going to serve Friday night to the point where Parents clearly saw that We had more people show up than we anticipated. And they ended up helping some of them shop with their kids. Helped wrap with their kids, you know, with one eye closed, like, you know, because they saw that we were We were we were just overwhelmed by the turnout. And it was so we sold out everything in less than an hour. I forget the exact numbers. It was about twenty gallons of hot cocoa that I personally made. And two of our teenagers and my daughter helped serve. It was twenty gallons of cocoa and something like five hundred cookies. Some of the Most of the gifts were purchased by the PTO. But also actually some of the extras from the holiday drive. Emery and Susan called me up last minute to say, hey, show up. We have some stuff for you to pick up. So those went as well. Another local mom mom had also donated from her own personal stash. So every single thing was gone. Every scrap was sold. We were just now we've got great ideas for next year because, you know, we definitely It was well received and it was wanted and needed and and kids had fun. And like anything, you want to improve next year. So thank you for reminding me to mention that.
Well, and again, thank you to yourself, to your team For pushing forward these activities. And I can't wait to hear more about This next event as you release the details on it. And a big shout out to Templeton and Phillips and the cultural councils. If they can come through and get you those funds. I know that both of the cultural councils in both towns are always very generous and they're always looking for great activities. So that's that's wonderful. That we're going to be able to tie that in as well. So that's great. Anyone else have any comments? I'm just going to give a shout out to All of our The music people, our clubs, our sports. It has been a challenging Month or so. Every time I turn around, there's a game that's been rescheduled. And and I know that this this little surge with with COVID has has made it left its mark in certain places, but These kids are persevering. Our coaches are, our teachers are, or admin just getting through. So I just want to say thank you to everyone. For all the efforts going into keeping the kids at school and keeping as many activities going as possible. So. And I'll leave all of the detail stuff to you, Dr. Kazvan. When you do your report out, I'm not going to steal any of your thunder this time. All right, if there's no more come, school committee comments, we'll go on to the next section. New items, surplus items. I don't believe there was anything for this month, so we'll pass this meeting. So we'll pass that over. Next up are some side letters of agreement with the NDA. NDEA as per open meeting law. I just want to put this out there because I know this is a hot topic with a lot of people. But a public body may approve final terms and execute a CBA with a union in executive session. Which is what we did when we met last time and and they allow that for reason number three, which is why we entered it because The way that the open meeting law is written and and interpreted. It allows us to conduct Probably, I want to say negotiating Discussions that may surround the CBA items. So we did go into executive session and we were presented With two side letter of agreements from our teachers' union, the NDEA. And we reviewed them. We had discussion and we did vote on them. And as per the requirement, we are now presenting them to the community and disclosing what we did. As per the requirements of the OML so that we're in in compliance with that. The first side letter of agreement that we voted on. Again, and we entered into this with the Narragansett District Education Association, the NDEA, which is our teachers' union. Is has to do with The early college program that Narragansett Regional High School is entering into. And I'm since they're fairly short, I'm going to just read them out loud for the for the community. And if anyone has any specific questions or wants to see Anything in detail, they can contact central office for the information. But it really just goes that That the terms and conditions set forth in the collective bargaining agreement and the successor agreement shall continue in full force. Except as modified by the side letter agreement. No unit A member will be laid off, non-renewed, transferred or displaced due to the offering of early college classes. No courses at NRHS shall be canceled due to the addition of early college courses. No student shall be enrolled in more than two early college courses a semester. And this side letter agreement will sunset on June fifteenth, twenty twenty three. Which I believe and correct me if I'm wrong, coincides with The end of the the grant timing. Hopefully it'll be renewed, but that that would coincide with first this grant if we get it. So that was the first one and it was a unanimous vote. The second one that we reviewed and and Deliberated and then voted on was also entered into with the NDEA. And this was over health and safety for staff members during the COVID pandemic. And the therefore, we agree under Article Twenty-three, the sick leave bank, the parties agree to extend access to the sick bank to any unit A member Who needs to use sick days for COVID symptoms or for care of a family member with COVID symptoms. I'm not going to read all of the details underneath that. But it is the use of the sick bank and the details are available if anyone wants to read them. And this side letter of agreement sunsets on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. We also agree that we're going to meet prior To September first, twenty twenty-three, which would be essentially the beginning of the next school year To determine if we needed a successor agreement to this. So those are the two agreements. Again, I apologize. We did vote in executive session and it was unanimous. So and I am here disclosing that those things happened. Does anyone want to add anything to these these two side letters? And I didn't make clear, clarify on my behalf. Right, Dr. Casvan, did I summarize those? Okay, excellent.
Perfectly. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. All right. Next, we have other items not reasonably anticipated by the chair forty-eight hours before the meeting. I know Kate, you had a potential change to the student handbook. I'd like to push that off To the next meeting just to give the committee that I have it will give the committee some time to look at it. And just review it so that we can have any discussion if we we need to. And I don't believe there's anything else that's come up. So we'll move on to the superintendent report. So I'm going to turn this over to you, Dr. Kazan, for whatever information You need to share with us, including any enrollment updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a lot of updates, quite frankly. I mean, I have one big one, which I'll save to the end, which is really the COVID. The change to what I'll call the COVID testing and which is folks have seen. I hope on the news. I'll start off with some very easy and great things. We are offering music lessons through extended day. Our music teacher. Our musical, pardon me, band teacher has done a great job and through extended day Is is offering lessons. And I don't know how many he has Lined up, but I think he's got a full slate. Henry, I know that we last time we spoke to him.
I believe he has lessons three days a week. I think on the third day, it's all of the kids together as like a band lesson. And the other two days are broken up, I believe, by instrument. And it's an hour and a half each day that he does the lessons and he's the kids love it, he said.
So it was kind of our commitment if we're remembering back To really try to just along with our academics. Where, you know, we've we're trying to also catch everybody up On all the things that they did miss, especially from the cultural side of things. And This was one of the ways that we've done that. We've also expanded our band program, at least for the time being with Esther funds at the middle school level. So So it's 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 worked out fantastic and we're hopeful that it's something that we can replicate years to come. Will we, you know, we shall see, but it's it's really been well received. We're starting in earnest to get the strategic planning group together. As we did last time, we need A school committee member to be part of that group. So You know, don't, don't all listen, not all at once, but
I think we have a vol and what would we call it? A voluntold?
Well, there's there's certainly been there's been situations when someone didn't show up for a meeting and they ended up being that person, I'm sure.
Being told something about that. Accept my voluntold assignment.
It's a tactic that's been, you know, it's been used before here. But in any event, we've We will be starting that process and we'll, you know, we'll start reporting out as soon as we have, you know, of course, information to report out on. So that's that's an important piece of that. We are, if I don't believe That we have the entire committee for the Assistant Superintendent Search Committee completed In terms of staff, we have, I believe, the staff and In the parent Volunteer, we still need a committee member for that as well. So we're looking to actually fill that very quickly because we're going to be moving quite, we're going to be moving quickly on that here soon. And so if folks want to just forward their interest to Ms. Varney, that would be fantastic. And but we do, we do actually need somebody very quickly for that because we'll be starting on that process. Pardon me. So last week or last week, we sent out an email almost. It was almost I liken it to putting a message in a bottle. Quite frankly, as a as a last ditch, I certainly don't joke About case tracing and we had to stop case tracing. We had, our numbers are updated on the on our on our website, but We had so many positives, quite frankly, that it was impossible To case trace the number of folks that need to be case traced. I again, I just want to remind And I will certainly share. I am positive. I'm COVID positive. That's why I My voice is starting to win if I just fall asleep. But in order to case trace just one person, it could be Six or seven or eight depending phone calls and especially kids who play on teams, etc. This is just not calling one person and one person. It's multiple. And what was happening is that we were not able to complete The task at hand. So some folks were not being notified that they were a close contact for days, quite frankly, because you there's only so many Hours in a day and there's only so many nurses who could actually do this type of work. So like a lot of districts around us. Excuse me, we we had to, we had to suspend it. Now, we had a plan, but we knew that we knew that there would be some Some areas in which we would case trace. We weren't exactly sure what at that moment in time. The state and we knew that something was coming from the state, quite frankly, we just didn't know what. As of yesterday, they formally announced the program in which that as long as For the folks who sign up, just like cool testing. Or permissions for test and stay, you'll be entered into the program. And I want to make sure this is really brand new. This happened this afternoon. Around four o'clock, but And this this information is going to be shared, of course, with the community. I'm just informing the committee as we know it, but We will continue to case trace, given, you know, high risks of transmission, those areas of high risk transmission. Lunch, band, sports teams. Folks, you know, places where there's a low fidelity in mask wearing or questions of in-school transmission. We'll still do those type of case tracings pre-K. You know, is an area that we're going to we'll be focusing on or too or more positive in an elementary classroom. So, you know, again, what this does is it really focuses our efforts more than just Again, I witnessed it myself. People would just call and say, I think So and so is positive, you know, my daughter's and she's coming to school to get in. So it would literally just kind of come out of nowhere. So Desi, again, met with Over today, they had a A joint meeting with the MPHN. And school nurse leaders, etc., project coordinators. And ultimately tests are going to be sent home. Rapid tests will be sent home. For those who, of course, sign up for this. They will test at home if they think that maybe they're symptomatic. Otherwise, we're expanding our Pool testing to two days a week and it's Tuesday and Friday to make sure I have that right. Yep. We so we will be doing pool testing again for those folks who have signed up for that Tuesdays and Fridays. We are going to adopt a new testing option at Home Rapids. As a result of adopting that program, there'll be no longer test and stay option. Symptomatic testing will continue for students who are symptomatic. And again, there's more details to come, but it'll You know, it puts a lot of onus on on homes, meaning that We are going to be relying, as we have from the very beginning, that folks are being honest with us. If they feel that their child or if they are positive, they should utilize the The rapid tests that they have and then let us know accordingly. And people have been great, quite frankly, people Have called, trust me, our nursing stations quite a bit Over the last couple of months. And I think I like this because it does add a preventive piece to it. Meaning that if over the weekend, someone's not feeling well and before coming into school on Monday to do a rapid. So That's what we have. There's more to come with that. And we were gonna, one of the requirements is that we are going to have to put out I'll call it a policy statement with everything here and then some as how the district will respond and How we'll be doing testing. And some folks have contacted us already. And are very upset that that we've had, we've changed, we've changed up. I've spoke to several parents. We just cannot We just cannot handle the 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 sheer numbers of people who need to be on case traced. So I don't know if you have any questions about that, but that's that's happening As soon as these tests are sent out to homes and we're we've already Reorganized our case tracing at this point. So we were not offering it like it like we have, say, last week.
I just wanted to give a shout out to our nurses again because as A mom with kids in school, I've had to have make several of those phone calls or emails. They have been so responsive. And I mean, they must be exhausted. And yet every time I've spoken to one of them. The kindness, the understanding, the depth of explanation they give has been fantastic. I just can't even imagine how exhausted they are right now with everything that they've had to do. And so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we To give them that recognition, make sure that we're, you know, How much we appreciate them as coming across.
Thank you. And certainly We've echoed all of those things. And they've, they certainly have felt the love. They know, you know, they take their role very seriously and they've done it. They've done a fantastic job, all of them. But again, it's been tough. It's been tough notifying people as quickly as we need to.
Yeah, and you know, I echo, you know, what Jen just said and And, you know, I think we've said this over and over. They were so busy before COVID. This is, this is just added such a layer of responsibility to those nurses. So it's nice to hear your feedback, Jen, on on, you know. So it's nice to hear your feedback, Jen, on, on, you know, your interactions. It's, you know, and we do, we have, we have great nurses. You know, Mariah does a fabulous job coordinating things. So I know it's a change and I know some of the community members might not be happy, but I think overall, it sounds like it'll be a good strategy. So I'll be interested to hear more as you start really identifying, you know, how things roll out based upon what we're doing, so.
We still, we'll report out, I mean, I, I think we were at seventy-seven positives today, for this week, for this week. So those numbers are down a little bit from last week, but they're still very, very high, you know, so I think we had over a hundred for the week last week. So we're hopeful that we're starting to see the decline as well, like, like they, you know, Boston has indicated earlier this week as well.
Great, thank you. Any, anything else that you'd like to report out on?
No.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have any curriculum and instruction updates from Ms. Kalise, if there's anything that you'd like to share with us?
We can't hear you, Kate. I don't know, you're not muted, but we can't hear you. I can read your lips, though.
Is there someone in the house who could help you with the computer?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. We'll do it without airbags. When we met at the agenda meeting, you had mentioned perhaps updating the school committee on a little detail of the strategic planning process that we're going to be embarking on, as well as a little bit on PD. So I just have a couple of things to say about that. So we did our first, well, first since I've been here, District Strategic Plan in 2019. We followed a process that the Department of Ed promotes called District, called Desi Planning for Success, PFS, and we used that process the last time and it was very productive. So we're going to use that again this time as we plan. We'll probably have five or six meetings over the next few months, going from probably February to late March, with some weeks in between. The Planning for Success process really is a hands-on process where all the stakeholders kind of come together and act on some protocols and, and activities that the, the Plan for Success recommends. So the, the main point is that in this process, the stakeholders look at what, it's called Back to the Future. You, you think of what it would be like if you were in the future, but you're in present tense. So you're projecting yourself three, four, or five years out and you're saying, what does NOST look like? What is it that we've achieved? And then you go backwards and you say, how did we get here? Where did we start and so forth? It's really a very interesting process. And then from there, you develop your strategic goals and look at data to support those. And then, once you have those strategic objectives in some big buckets, then you think about your strategic initiatives and how they fit in. So that'll be a good process. We're looking forward to it. It worked very well last time. And in the planning for this, we've noticed that the statements we made the last time around were kind of heartwarming in a way because we, we have been able to say, oh, we didn't have this, we didn't have that, we, we were doing this differently. And, and those things have been achieved. It's just nice to see the achievement that's happened over the last several years. And I think the District Strategic Plan connects to the school improvement plans, which connect to Dr. Casvian and my goals, which connect to other people's goals. And I think it really keeps the district moving in a coherent direction. I'm just going to briefly say that we have provided over sixty professional development opportunities this year, since the beginning of the year. We have different focuses in each building. The high school is using consulting from engaging schools to develop and and promote engagement strategies that lead to deeper learning. It's nice this year that we have a lot of teacher input. So Mr. Young has used his teacher leaders together with the consultant as they go through these, you know, each professional development leads to the next one. They talk about how did this go? What do we need to do next and so forth? So the teachers have been very integral to that. Similar to middle school, they're really deepening their understanding of the social emotional competencies. But each time that Mrs. Lefrenier and Mrs. Smith plan a professional development, the teachers have time to take that information and say, okay, how do we develop these social emotional competencies in our students? What's important for this grade level and for this class of students? What might be different than, for them than it might be for others? So it's not really cookie cutter, it's really tailored to the needs of the students at each grade level. And elementary, of course, has focused on some behavior training as well as reading. I mean, obviously, K to three has really, you know, taken a hit with the COVID disruptions in learning. So that was a much needed focus. I can't provide to the committee graphs like I did in the past because we use Teach Point now to to track our professional development. And there isn't a way for me to look at, you know, what was the overarching stat on people's satisfaction. I have to look at each individual one of the sixty, but I can say that in browsing through the the heavy hidden, you know, PTs that we've had, they have been very overwhelmingly positively received by, by teachers.
Great, thank you for that update. That's good to hear that we've had a lot of input from the, the teaching staff. If I remember, probably four or five years ago, I remember the feedback when I think the teachers were polled, it was that they didn't feel they had enough input. So it's so great to hear that we're continuing the process to ensure that their input is being heard and PD is developed around what they see as their needs to. So that's great. Thank you. Anything else before we move on to subcommittee reports? Okay, we're going to hop right into subcommittee reports then. Academic administrative, we did not meet in December because the update we had had at the previous school committee meeting kind of hit on all the topics. We meet at the end of January, so we'll have an update for that committee in the February meeting. Finance Subcommittee, I think I've already kind of mentioned that we did meet, but we're really, the next meeting will have most of the detail. So I don't think there was anything, Hank, I'm looking at you because you don't know where I'm looking on the screen. I don't think there was anything else that we really.
Covered everything tonight that we discussed.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, facilities? Do we have, have we had a facilities meeting? I think we may have. Any, any updates?
I, we had the meeting, I think we updated, I, I can't remember how long ago it was. Margaret, where we, we were working with the towns on some of the, the projects that we would do and look at the financing, okay?
Perfect, yes. Okay, great. So there hadn't been one in between. Policy, the policy Subcommittee did meet and there was a first reading of policies that we'll present to the committee for approval for first reading. They were attached to the agenda, so hopefully everybody had a chance to review those. Mrs. Mattson isn't here, so I will go ahead and read through what the policies were. MASC had proposed some updates. They did a deep dive into the fiscal management section, which is Section D in the policy handbook. And they were looking through, it's here, I think, six different lenses, ensuring that the language is aligned with the constitutional and legal principles of school funding. So ensuring that, you know, anything legally we have to do or principle-wise, that's in the law, that the policy reflected that. Confirming the policy remains focused on the legal authorities of the school committee, so making sure that anything that we're responsible for as a school committee is, is noted in the policy. And as well as on the opposite side, that we're not overreaching as a committee and taking on responsibilities that aren't ours. Updating legal references, clarifying processes is needed, incorporating some best process language, and also clarifying regional, regional policy distinctions, which you'll see one of these policies, we're looking to delete because somehow it was added twice. We had a version for non-regionals and a version for regionals. Well, we didn't really need both of them, so you'll, you'll hear about one that's being deleted. So under those lenses, there are, the policies that we're looking to update, that were there for you to review, was Policy DA, the Fiscal Management Goals. Policy DB, the Regional School District Annual Budget. Policy DB1, which we're proposing to delete because this is where we had two policies that were essentially the same thing, but one added some regional language and the other didn't, but they're the same policy. We're going to delete DB1 because it was a duplicate of Policy DB. There are updates to Policy DBG, the Budget Adoption Procedure, DBJ, Regional School District Budget Transfer Authority, DEC, Federal Funds Supplement, Not Supplant. This one here is a new policy. And this basically just makes the statement that when we get federal funds, it's not to supplant or replace funding we already have, it's in addition to the funding. It's kind of like how we look at one-time funds. We don't want to have ongoing expenses funded through, you know, with a one-time grant, and that's basically what this policy is saying. And then an update to Policy DH, the Regional School District Bonded Employees and Officers. So unless there's any questions or comments or concerns, I would entertain a motion to approve the first reading of those policies as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Marks. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second from, I will say, Mr. Mason, I guess, I think. Any questions or comments on any of those policies?
I have just a clarifying question on DBJ, where it says that the transfers between major accounts must be submitted to the full school committee for approval. I'm just wondering what that clarification of full means in the sense that, like, for example, Lori Matson is not here today, so would it not be considered presenting to the full school committee if she is not in the meeting or, and this is just a clarifying point for me.
No, good question. The distinction there is that the, it has to come in front of a meeting of the full school committee. It can't go to the finance Subcommittee approved.
Got it.
So it needs to be presented at a full school committee meeting. And as long as we have a quorum, it's considered a full school committee meeting.
Thank you.
No, good question. All right, any, anything else? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Neimchura?
Yes.
Mrs. French?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So that was unanimous and we'll put out the second reading and adoption of these policies probably for our second February meeting. And, and then hopefully we'll go forth from there. Long-term planning, I know Mrs. Matson's not here and she is the chair of that committee. We had a really good meeting this month, talked about a lot of things, the strategic plan, a whole bunch of different things. The Long-Term Planning Committee had gone on in every other month because we were kind of, almost in a little bit of a holding pattern and we're back to meeting monthly. So we'll get her to do an update at our next meeting with the Long-Term Planning Committee is up to, so we can give everybody an update on that Subcommittee. And the last one is diversity, equity, inclusion. I don't know, Mr. Marks, you've got any words you'd like to say?
We have a meeting tomorrow night, so we, we should have some additional information after that.
Great.
And you already said it, we are working with all of the holidays and a bunch of stuff going on. We do have another agency that we're communicating with. We really haven't started any work yet, but we've actually got a decent agenda and will be tomorrow.
Great. Look forward to an update at our next meeting. So thank you. All right, there's no correspondence. Again, upcoming dates, we are going to cancel slash postpone the meeting that we had for the tri-board on January twenty-fourth. So that means our next meeting as a committee will be February ninth at five thirty, hopefully in person in the Kiva. And after that, just to give everybody a heads up, the meeting, the next meeting after that is February twenty-third because I think that still is the third Wednesday, but then February vacation, I think is the following week. I forget how it falls, but now it's okay. I have a calendar in front of me, thank you. So we're also looking to do one of our budget hearings. So we'll talk more about the budget process and the hearings and the certification process at our next meeting, when we focus on the financials, so that everybody who's not familiar with it, we can bring up to speed on how that will work. With that being said, we do need to go, oh, yes, Kate.
I was just going to say, so just confirming, February twenty-third is school vacation week?
Yeah, now.
Okay.
Yeah, now, hang on one second, I just want to double check to why I would have put February twenty-third. So that is school committee week. That's not school committee, that's vacation week. All right, let, let me take a look at the calendar between here and then and see if we need to move anything. Because normally we try to do budget hearings and the next week is March second, which is really when we need to have our final budget hearing. So we only have to do one official budget hearing. So let me talk with, with Dr. Kazmit and we'll come up with a strategy of how we want to, because not only do we just fit that, but we really want to meet with the towns. So there's a lot of things to get in and we're running out of weeks. So Chris, maybe you and I can have a conversation offline and just see what the best plan of attack for dates and whatnot, okay?
Yeah, we're, yeah, I, we should because it'll get, it'll be approaching the time that, you know, we really need to have already had the budget out, just because it helps us. So yeah, let's, let's, please, that'd be, that'd be great.
Okay, excellent. So stay tuned on that, but our next meeting is February ninth. So. All right, so with that being said, there's nothing else. We do need to go into executive session this evening for reason number three, to discuss, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation with the UFCW and/or the NDEA. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. The meeting will not return into open session immediately following. So I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session as I just read. Mr. Marks, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second from Mr. Mason. I'm not even going to give anyone a chance to object. We're just going to take the vote. Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Neimchura?
Yes.
Mrs. French?
Gladly, yes.
Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So thank you to everyone who has been following along to the public or will be viewing this recorded. And we will now enter executive session, so we'll be stopping the recording at this point. So thank you to the public. And we will end the, the live stream.